All the many of the whole in order. Roll call, please. He's not on.
You miss him? I'm here.
Yes, I'm here.
Here. I didn't hear my name, sorry.
So now that we have that difficult part of the meeting. We will have our department head reports, starting with city administrator.
Hello, everybody. I'm going to start off with the EV car charging stations. There's a few quick updates. First, the utility primary work is done. We just need to set the transformer, waiting to see where this is warehoused. And when it will be installed, I don't know where it's at. We're still waiting for it. From there, we just need to energize and set the meter. And learn the card reader functions. So that's going to be something that the city staff will have to figure out how to use it. And when I hear more, I will keep everyone apprised. As I mentioned earlier, delays are happening, but those cannot be helped with the distributors. When the chargers are complete, we will have a ribbon cutting ceremony. After that, we will get them located on the map. For the public to see where chargers are available for their use. So that's throughout the whole state. Restrooms, the restrooms are in place at Sulein Park and Michael Park. We're finalizing the security camera systems for those areas, and they should be fully installed by next week. So airport, we're having an airport meeting on Thursday, October 12th at nine AM. We're gonna meet again with Melissa Underwood of SEH. To discuss the project schedule for the master plan. At our August 10th meeting, we had every stakeholder there discussing the needs for the airport as well as growth and desired items. And ultimately, the financial planning, capital improvement plan, final master plan document, and airport layout plan will be derived from the meetings held. And speaking of the city's capital improvement plan, it's coming together. So we're still working on that. Should be discussing that in the near future. Citywide electronic sign, which I'm sure you've seen. Businesses who donated to the citywide electronic sign will start seeing their logos for that contribution recognized. We're starting to flash seven this week, seven next week, and then keep flipping them. So there it's hard to have them all on there because there's so many. So so yeah, we we really appreciate everybody's donation so far. And we're a little short of our budget. So if anyone is interested in donating toward the cost, you can still do so. Minimum cost to display your logo is one hundred to get your business recognized. So and Polk County Economic Corporation Annual Awards Breakfast. They have that every year, and I'll be attending that this year on Tuesday, October 17th. I've been doing so in my capacity as being on AEDC. As a member, and it's a really nice banquet. What they do is they recognize all the businesses in Polk County and those that stand out. They have a huge footprint in the area. So it's really a nice, nice breakfast that they have. Housing development and hotel development. We're starting to get some interest in the housing development in our area. I've talked to a few individuals and I've had some promising talks with local builders and developers. And I hope these come into fruition moving forward. I really I I've got my fingers crossed. But as far as hotel development, there have been talks as well with a couple of different individuals. If anything materializes there, I'll be sure to convey that with all of you. Ben and I went to the NIMs training, which is the National Incident Management System for senior officials. That doesn't mean we're old. It just means we work with the city. We went there last Thursday, September 14th. And it was really a good training. We had that at St. Croix County Government Center in Hudson. And it's very beneficial. Lisa McMahon, who is the Polk County Emergency Management Director for Polk County, taught the the class. She's got a really large experience background. She's worked in Florida and with hurricanes, train derailments, California wildfires. She's got a really large background in emergency management. So she taught us some really good training in regard to that. City of Amory was the only one there that represented Polk County. So yay yay for City of Amory. And that was put on through FEMA. And through the US Department of Homeland Security. And we learned the following things. We learned understanding the emergency management mission. Review our authorities, learn about our team, review our review our plans and resources and know how to lead during a crisis. And promote community preparedness. This got me to thinking about our next storm season, which is coming up, which is winter. And given the major snow events that we had last year, which that was a lot. This is very much on my mind. So the process moving forward with instant command and the systems that follow are very important for our community and will be looked at thoroughly. So that being said, you know, we need to talk about, like Rick had said, getting a group together of people, you know, and our firefighter chief and police and Jeff Public Works. So and you all. So any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Patty. Ben, quick clerk treasurer reports. Longer walk, that's right. I could have filled a little more time.
All right. We met with SEH last week to discuss the whole sewer plant project. That meeting specifically was for the zoning ordinance that has to go through the like five hundred foot buffer. We sent letters out last week to I think thirty houses and a couple of businesses right around there. So I've been getting a lot of calls about that. People are just curious what's going on. Related to that, we will have four public hearings next week at Plan Commission, one of them about the ordinance. So it's gonna be a pretty busy week next week on Thursday. Also with SEH, I've been doing a lot of financial stuff for the clean water fund application they have to submit. It's due on the 30th, so next week's gonna be pretty busy getting all the audit stuff over to them and all the stuff they need. Taylor Peggy and I attended election training at the county on August 21st. It was the last one I need to be good to go for the next cycle. I need my six hours every year, so we're good. The county will actually be doing polling place audits, and they're going to use us as an example because we were the best one. She came around. So that was nice. And then Patty and I have been doing some responses to auditing firms about our RFP. So I know Ricky mentioned that Glenwood didn't didn't get any response. We have gotten some. They're asking us a lot of questions. So we've been busy doing that too. So specifically today, that one was kind of hard. She had like thirty four questions. So about it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Fire chief, Mr. Fron, Chief Fron. I'm going by my sheet, you know, if I don't follow this, if I don't follow their sheet, I am I am gonna mess everybody up.
Ah, good evening. Good evening, Chief Mayor. Like Mark Miles was, what do we call now? Chief or mayor? So he just said, Chief Mayor.
Well, I earned chief, so.
We call you chief then, or we call you mayor?
Whatever. Don't not late to lunches.
Okay. As of today, we have gone to combined first responder and fire. Oh, can't say that. Two, three hundred sixty five. We had three calls, first responder calls today. So we're up to three sixty eight for the year so far. On August 21st, we had our ISO audit. We got dinged on a few things. I responded to the letter that was written. And we have one year to correct any of the things that were wrong. I also copied the town township chairman's and at the time, Mr. Elkin was the interim mayor. I forwarded the letter on to him. So with that, I did get a reply back from ISO, and we have a telecommunications meeting on October 2nd to go over all the numbers and everything else to to get back. We went up one. So he said, we only missed it by three points. And I told him, I said, with our dedicated fire department, I said, I'm sure we can get back down to where we were with no problem. So they're gonna be working with me and and I'm I'm sure we'll get it done. So at our last fire committee meeting, we had discussed private driveways. One of our firefighters was doing some work on Eightieth or Eighty Fifth over in that area. The fire committee said I needed to send a letter to the homeowners and let them know about the narrowness of their driveway. We had a fire call in that area on Monday. And I just had driver go down them roads just so I could see him. And to see if the owners were there. And fortunately, yeah, they were there. So instead of signing the letter, I actually got to knock on their door. And I told him, I said, narrow, I said, is our truck minimum? I mean, from the width of the bumper, the minimum is nine feet. And I got actually got up on top of the our ladder or our engine one and took a tape measure to the floor and it's eleven feet. So the minimum, the bare minimum, the driveway could be as far as width and height. There's nine by eleven. So anybody who's out there, I don't know what camera I'm on. But anybody who's out there, if your driveway is not nine by eleven and we can't get a truck down through there, I'm sorry, but we ain't gonna get a truck in there. So you just hope that your insurance companies don't find out. So anyway.
I hate to bother you. This is kind of important. Is this something that townships and others can send out? Notification or is this?
According to what I was told at the fire committee meeting, that since it's a private driveway, we can't say, hey, you have to do this.
I I know, but what about just note the notice like you're saying right now? Can they make that as a notice? I'm sorry to bother. I'm sorry to break it.
No, 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 no. As far as what they can do, I don't know what they can do. I just know what I can do. And the only thing I can say is, hey.
Maybe a fire committee question then.
We pretty much decided that if you can't get the truck down through there, you send them a letter and said that we will not be providing fire protection for your home.
Right.
This is why. And there's DNR precedents with that, all the intensive fire ground up there. They just they just tell you, you know, if you don't have a defensible space and a place to turn around and vegetation trimmed back at least fifty feet from the edge of your house. We may or may not go into your into your cabin or whatever.
Turns out the daughter of one of the homeowners actually does homeschooling. So she actually came through the hall that day and I gave him a little tour. And it just happened, well, you were at my parents'. I said, yeah, I said, this is why. I said, I didn't, I'm not, no, by no means I want it to be, hey, I'm being a jerk about this. But I said, I'm glad I went there because now I know that any of our tenders that come, we gotta stage them way up on the road, up on Eighty Fifth. And we got to head to tenders come down one at a time, and hopefully they can turn around in there. And all our other firefighters are gonna walk, and some of that's quarter mile or longer. So or it's running back and forth of the range or a pickup truck. So, you know, people ain't taking this consideration if they had a fire. Could be a serious issue. And this would just happen to be, you know, two of the places that I went to. I'm sure there are plenty more in in the in our fire district that may be that way. So that's why I'm letting everybody know. Your minimum is, I mean, our fire truck is minimum of nine by eleven. And we have to get it in there. We can't get it in there. We'll stop right there. We don't have enough hose. I'm sorry. You know, there's nothing we can do.
Yep.
So anyway.
Good information.
Is that something that the homeowner should be advising their homeowner's insurance?
Well, I I don't think they would because.
But they they would run the risk of being denied a claim.
Absolutely. So, yeah, homeowners are gonna keep their lips clamped until you know, they get it cleared away. But if their insurance found out, yeah, they're gonna, yeah, good. Actually, either go up or get canceled. So anyway, and that's what I relayed to the the two homeowners that I I'd spoken to. And once it all, I'll get it taken care of tonight. So anyway, which is good. Like I said, but by all means, I didn't want to go in there and try to be a jerk or be mean or anything. I just want to let them know, hey, you know, sorry, but but anyway.
Jack, how many homeowners live on that road?
Great.
Soon to be four.
Soon to be four.
Soon to be, okay.
And that's one road. The other road is next next one to the south that Dylan took me down. And there was a little cabin back off. One of our firefighters just live in there. And I mean, the trim, I mean, our pickup truck was hitting the branches. You gotta raise that up. You gotta choose that. That's one that said what we'll get it done tonight. So well. Any questions?
Good information.
Thanks.
Thank you. Now I will not, I won't skip Kip. I will go back and get officer in charge. Okay. I didn't want to not recognize you though. All right. Then we will move on to library director.
Yes, he did.
We'll give everybody an opportunity to speak.
Hi, everyone.
Hello.
It's been another busy month at the library. Since we've met, we put on nine youth programs and five adult programs with a total of two hundred and ninety seven participants. Pretty good numbers. Since we last met, we've hosted a no school activity day, three different book clubs, four Wednesday storytimes, and started our fall session of play and learn. Play and learn is an early literacy and parenting skills class that is offered by the St. Croix Valley Family Resource Center. But we collaborate with them to offer them a space, and then our youth services librarian works with them, plays with the kids, reads the story, and gives early literacy tips. So it's a really nice collaboration. We also took the book bike into the parade at Fall Fest, and that was a lot of fun. I have to say, we saw a lot of familiar faces. And then in October, we're going to see our first teen after hours program. So Emma is braving a handful of teens and pizza and games and some other activities to try and get that group to use the library more. They're infamous for not coming to the library. We're bringing back our really popular family puzzle competition evening. And we're hosting a history talk on Abraham Lincoln next month. And we're having several free movie nights. I'm going to be attending the annual state library conference at the end of October. And we are also participating in the Halloween Community Trick or Treating. That's the event every year since we've moved to this building that we give away a free book to every child that comes to the library. Last year, we had over eleven hundred people visit the library and gave away over five hundred books. So it's a really nice way to teach kids that this is a great place to come, and they've they can do a lot here. Also, we have some visiting authors that are coming. They're going to present at the school, and then the library is hosting a public event also at the schools for families to come to. That will happen the end of October. And then finally, our long range plan is going in front of the Board of Trustees at our meeting on Monday. And hopefully that will get approved, and then I can present it to you all next month. Any questions? No?
Okay. Good report.
Thank you.
Thank you. You have to say the library has a lot of energy. It's great. All right, Mr. Mahoney, Public Works. He's he's slow because he's still recovering from Fall Festival.
It went pretty good. Well, this month, we had a water leak on Keller Avenue. Luckily, we didn't have to dig up the street. It was the old American Family Insurance Building there. It was just a curb stop, but that was a, so if you see the sidewalks out, that's why. And then we got some storm drains they're fixing right now. So we're gonna do it all without a small charge on the concrete. The crew also spent a lot of time getting the bathrooms ready. As Patty said, they're good to go. Paving, concrete, everything's done. What else we got?
Are they open?
They're open.
Open.
Yep. Internet's in, just wait for the camera guys to show up, put the cameras in, and then everything will be ready. Yeah, they're all open and ready to go. The creek. We spent a couple of days on the creek again. People are throwing brush back into it. Nobody's keeping it up or mowing it or weed whip it. We got two or three neighbors that are doing a real nice job. But the rest of them are kind of slacking on it. So we got that cleaned back up. And then if you look along the roads and stuff, nobody's cleaning up their boulevards. A lot of people aren't mowing their boulevards. That isn't the city's responsibility. It's the homeowners. Just make it look a lot better. We had to run around and do a lot of that before Fall Festival.
Did notice that, guys, the week before.
And, you know, even the grass growing out of the sidewalks, they don't whack that down. Nothing, you know, serious, just sure looks a lot nicer when it's done. And then it's been Fall Festival up and down. Pretty much our month. Any questions?
Do those repeat offenders on the various streets where there are repeat offenders, are they getting a bill, Jeff?
The boulevard, no. They don't mow the grass, yes. Probably it will start because it keeps happening all the time. But no.
They look good though.
They do look a lot cleaner. It doesn't take much either.
No, thank you, Jeff.
I guess since he brought it up, I think we should all thank the city crew and fire and police for all the work you put in keeping our city safe and showcasing the beautiful place that we all live.
Yeah, and and a big thank you to everybody who worked so hard on Fall Festival. And that really showed off the city. It was wonderful, just wonderful. Okay, next item is historical society building discussion. There is note here from the society. There's nobody here. But the society is working actively on fundraising to purchase a building. And I think they're looking for some visibility, make sure everybody understands and knows that.
I had asked that to be put on the agenda. Paul had asked me directly if the city would be donating to that cause. And I said, that's something we'd have to bring up. And discuss it. I thought he was probably going to be here, but obviously not tonight. So oh, okay. But where we go from here, I think we need to, you know, consider a donation or at least have them come in and talk about it a little bit in the direction of what their plans are and so on.
Absolutely. I I think, you know, sending this information is helpful, but I think it would be beneficial for us and for the rest of the community to have a opportunity for the society to make a presentation for us and the community. I know that there's interest. And I know that there's a lot of stuff, and a lot of people have other stuff they'd like to donate, so they don't have it. But it's, you know, it's important to do that. And I will just say that even even Barnes has this historical society. I've been in that one. It's pretty nice. So it goes along with pride of community. So I I think we should ask go through Chuck Williamson, who sent this, and ask them to come to one of our next meetings, ask to get on our agenda because I think it's an important piece of our community to have something that's available. It's it's kind of fun to to look back on it and then look at the historical stuff and say, well, wait a minute, that was when I was in high school. It's not that old. But it is. If we can, if if we can reach out, thank you, Patty. Anything else about that?
I don't believe so.
Okay, if not, then housing development discussion.
Again, I had asked that to be put on the agenda. We've got the beautiful industrial parks that we're looking to sell the lots to businesses. And looking from the outside, you're looking for a business to come in there, but obviously there would be personnel coming in with that. And we really are short of houses, housing in this area. Looking back at our recent police chief that was unable to find housing adequate in this area and ended up living in New Richmond. But I think it's something the city needs to look at. What can we do to encourage development for housing in this area?
I, you know, I think our current policy of and that and that was voted on a long time ago, but our current policy, I believe require or says that if you develop any property in the city of a development in the city, and they're all subject to developers agreements, but currently, I believe the developer has to pay for all the infrastructure. And which is water, sewer, curb and gutter. And I don't, I assume they probably have to pay something to the phone company and and internet also to get that stuff around. Which becomes almost unbearable when you start talking about, and we have a have a current looker at Sun Sundance again. And you know, the figures bandied around are a million two. And that's before you put a shovel in the ground, before you pound a nail. Before anything is sold, you got a million two plus whatever the property costs itself. In the past, we've offered at least once, I know, that that we would forego the charges, not not erase them, but just let them not pay those costs per lot until a lot was sold. And I believe that had a you have to build a build a house on it within a time period. So it isn't, so somebody can't just come in, lay out the streets and then say, well, it's economically not feasible for me, so I'm not building for five years or something, you know. I think we should encourage some kind of, you know, that maybe that type of a program. Short of of the possibilities of the city using some type of grant money or or money that we've had to buy physically buy property. You know, whatever fifteen, fourteen, twenty, whatever the parcel might be, that would be advantageous to the city to have you know, as for housing. Sort of us buying it, putting the water and sewer in and then advertising through the local realtor to sell lots. I'm sure there are places that have done that, but I don't know if that's feasible here.
Well, I like the idea of putting in the services and then selling, you know, having it paid back once the lot is built and sold.
Well, I think we're fortunate in that that a couple of the places that are currently under consideration for developing are in TIF districts. I don't know if the TIF district has enough cash flow to be able to do that kind of stuff.
The one that we, the one that the Sundance property is pretty healthy. That but that one, if we if we get that going, that's it'll be very healthy.
Would have, you'd have to put it in one or start one.
And and the other the other, the other one that's currently under consideration is E West of Slumberland. And I and that is in a TIF district, who we found out. So so there I but I again, if there's any money in that, yeah, because we did a lot of the expense for the industrial park is TIF money from that from that. So
At least there'd be funding to to do that so that you could carry it until there was actual sales.
Right. So well, we had a meeting here with one of the developers and that's waiting for a response from them. And I believe there will be a meeting with one of the other developers. Should have been this afternoon, but he was gone. So but I think we need to seriously plan to do to be involved with something like that. A what?
So he was very interested. He's got them now. He's got apartments here currently. So
I think just identifying those pieces of property and having people know that there's something that might be for sale or
Right.
should spark some should spark some interest, because I don't think either of those pieces have a, a sign that says, you know, build here or, you know, what's available. And we, we, I don't think can get into the house, house building.
I guess what I'm wondering is, is there any formal steps that we need to take that would, um, ensure that we do that, or is this just something that we have to make sure we cover with builders', builders' agreements?
Developers agreement, yeah, it would have
Things like that.
Because it, it was done once before.
So I think maybe the thing is
Yeah, I think go on record because I think it, you know, well, we did it once before. Well, when was that and how did that? It would be nice to say that we, we support that and that's what we want to, want to do to support development in the future. Makes it a little less painful.
So, yeah, when we're in talks with these developers, we can certainly blow that, we kind of sort of touched on it.
Yeah, but I would, I guess if I would say that this is more of a formal statement by the, the council that that's the direction we wanted to, to follow. Yes. Then, um, it wouldn't have to be, well, for this developer you did and that developer we didn't because we forgot or right, um, just making sure that it's, it's clear that we, we'll work with people.
I think we should probably approach. There's a spot saw, or just across from the, uh, from the city garage that as far as I know is plotted and, and, uh, everything ready to go.
Had the developers agreement, I think he made it that far, but he just.
Yeah, cost, cost went up so amazingly fast that.
I guess what I can do is, is maybe set up a policy, policy of some sort and then see where it goes from there.
Yeah. Yes, bring it back to the council and, or, or.
Is there any possibility, I always like to have all the participants have a little skin in the game.
Oh, yeah.
And, and I, these, I mean, I get why these developers don't develop when they have a million dollars to put up front, you know? Um, but, you know, if, if they want to, it just seems like if they want to be included in, in, in that, if they could come up with ten percent or whatever.
Twenty or whatever.
Fifty fifty, I think you're right.
Fifty fifty? And, and they didn't have to pay their, their half until the lot sold.
Oh, okay.
And that was, so that was that an outright grant on that then? The fifty percent? Was, so they had to come up with fifty percent of the cost to start with and then the, the other fifty when the lot was sold.
And, and they paid that back if they sold their lots, so it was.
That's a pretty, yeah, that's a pretty sweet carrot to hold out to a developer, I think. So, it would be nice to get the folks that are the landowners of those things that are interested in development, maybe to get them together at, uh, sometime and to talk about their options. I know, you know, everybody always wants the city to pony up, but, uh, in this case, it, it's has a, a real mutual benefit, uh.
Yeah, that's always tricky because, um, some want more participation than others. If you're talking to the folks about hotels, same thing, you know, it depends on how much participation is expected from the city, so. We're not, we're not trying to stay in the way, but also maybe we can't afford some of the, the requests that are being made without negotiation anyway.
If you build something too, you don't want it just to sit there either.
Right, right? Yeah, but then, Mike's point is, is very much one that we've talked about, and that is if you expect to put something in the, in the industrial park, you have to have a place for people to live who will work there.
Yes.
So they go together. Thank you. Um, item four is our budget discussion.
I don't know if it's actually on that package that came in yesterday afternoon, but we got this prepared right from state.
Okay.
That is going up by about a hundred thousand.
Okay.
That is pretty awesome. That, I don't think, supposed to happen next year.
Yes.
I know the fire committee changed around, like the wage and utilities.
Okay.
Yeah, that was a nice surprise. I just went, wow, that's awesome. Yeah.
So overall, Ben, what's your feeling on where we're going to end up?
Think we should be relatively light on the increase. They haven't released what they can do yet in terms of strength. I don't I would guess like three percent. But right now, I think the total increase I have is basically flat, and that doesn't really include any large capital.
Right.
I just have a couple, yeah, estimates in there right now. I think I have a hundred and forty thousand in capital. It's there, depending on what we need to hire.
And if you all remember this building, living here, we didn't know what the costs were going to be. So that is reflected in the budget too, so you can kind of see where
What's the process for, um, moving money from one part of the budget to the next?
You mean like in this part or the current?
Yeah, no, the current budget. Okay. The reason that I ask, and, and I had Ben, uh, put the, uh, budget report, uh, you got an email on that? And it, and, uh, um, obviously our police, uh, budget is way under where it has been. Um, and that, that doesn't carry over, so don't go to Hawaii. Yeah, but, uh, um, um, but there's, there's, just for instance, uh, the first one under Police Administration salaries were two hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars under budget for where we could and should be. Um, and, uh, you know, we're certainly going to have a few more expenses because we are, you know, we're going to hire one probably before, you know, the first of the year and maybe another one. Um, we certainly hope to have a police chief in place, so we'll have, uh, more salaries, but the fact is there's two hundred and twenty-seven thousand, that there is no place for that to have gone. Um, and I would like to make sure that we, um, shift that to something appropriate so that we have that money in budget. Um, as far as I know, it's not legal to tax and have money that you didn't, you know, you can't, you can't tax for money that you don't have a place for it to go. So I think we need to, uh, don't need to do it tonight. And certainly I would, I think you should, everybody should look at that, those figures, maybe you all did, I don't know. But I don't see any problem at all with, uh, transferring that money.
There's, there's
We had the same thing last year, though, at the end of the, end of the budget, because Tom retired in September and we didn't pay chief's wages for four months, so that's, you know.
Yeah, there's also some things about, if there are any things that we can pull forward that we would be expecting in twenty-four, that if we can pull that into this budget year would be very helpful too. And I don't know exactly where those things might be. Sometimes it's hard to spend the money. Yeah, Chuck wants a new truck, okay. To be able to pull some of those things forward and, and, uh, and transfer some of that money so it could be used and offset for next year too, makes it more effective as well.
And so if we, if we had some type of a, uh, of, and I don't know going, getting back to Mike's issue, uh, when we're talking about helping our, uh, developers and stuff like that, if there's something, some way that we can uh, even if we put it in a fund that we, that we say is, this is for, uh, developing, but I'm just shooting it in the dark, you know? But, uh, um, we don't want, we can't give it back necessarily, you know, to the yeah, yeah. So, but just so that those transfers are made so that, um, so that we, if we have room for various things like that. Yes, yep. So.
I think that'd be a good place to start too.
Otherwise, I didn't see anything else particularly that, yeah, no, I mean, a few bucks here and there that we are going to monkey with or have to do anything with, but.
And it was helpful to look at comparison change between twenty-two and twenty-three. Because it, you know, there was kind of a roller coaster there for some of those. Interesting. So when are we going to officially work for a budget?
Well, I think we, we need to start with requests then. And I've, I've talked to the, we need to get those requests replaced, so we know what we're working on. And that's where our, our capital fund comes in too, our, 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 um, plan that we're putting together. So, that being said, um, we're going into October, I think we're really going to be pushing hard in October. Because November, mid-November is where we have our public hearing, so that's where everything's fine. So if you really want to push.
Yeah, so we need to
I do know the community center, they're, they want to, uh, present their needs for the parking lot and roof repair.
They got any bids or they know what anything's going to cost at all?
Pardon?
Have they got any idea what stuff's going to cost or they just coming here?
No, because it was, it's kind of uh, first, I was told that they were supposed to get the quotes. And then I heard the other way, because we actually, uh, own the building and everything, that it was the city's responsibility. I know we had the meeting, Monday's meeting, and how it kind of turned out. Uh, Dirk was going to contact Monarch. You bought, so you have that taken care of? Wonderful, so you have the cost for that?
I haven't got it yet, but they're working on, I've got the guy already measured it all and he's working on the.
Okay, perfect. And then the other issue was for the roof.
There's nothing wrong with the roofs.
With the leaking?
That was just last year, got built up with the ice and the snow, when the ice and the snow, it was just there's, there's nothing wrong with the roof. It's all been repaired, cleaned up and.
Yes, I know there's one area in the, uh, the game room that needs to be fixed. Then I, I suggest
The other room.
Okay, I suggest that we talk with Jen, where, where she's going to
We're over there today fixing water leaks, they got all over.
So, can you explain to her again?
On top of her. Got her.
Thank you.
She's not shy. She lets me know what she wants.
Thank you.
Actually, good. That, that happens. Any other comments about budget or topics for budget? And I guess it would be appropriate to just note that if we're going to consider it, that if we would be considering any type of donation for the Historical Society Building or anything like that, we would have to consider that either in this year or budget for next year. So we should get that on, into discussion.
Absolutely. Put your thinking caps on if there's something that really stands out. Developers, that's a big one.
Parks and Rec is going to come back to us with a, with, uh, right, and I, I don't know if I told the rest of the council, but I talked to, uh, one of the guys that's, uh, will be the president of the Lions Club next year. And, uh, and I believe that they have, they've said that they're, they're willing to take on at least part of the project, that, because we didn't have any costs or anything yet. Um, so Parks and Rec Committee are looking at what's out there and how much it costs. And then we'll get with the Lions Club and see what their participation would be. Um, but like Jeff said, that stuff is really expensive, so.
Especially when you're talking about put, putting together some accessible.
Yeah, this, this would be, this would be for a handicapped, uh, you know, most, most specifically, but not, uh,
Not exclusively. So any, any, any extra money is?
Yeah, don't spend it till we got it in our pockets.
Like, like Ice Cube in July.
Exactly, yeah.
No, we need to hear all those things. That's, that's important to be able to to make, um, good decisions. Then it's public comment, and I don't see anybody unless somebody here wants to make public comment. Guess not. That's fine. Um, we now are at closed session, so I will read the Wisconsin statute nineteen point eight five sub one sub C. Police officer position considering employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility, will entertain a motion to go into closed session.
I'll make that motion.
Second. Motion made and seconded, um, roll call.
Yes.
Ben Summer?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Yes.
We are in closed session, be noted. Okay. We're back in open session. And we only have one piece of agenda, motion to adjourn by somebody.
So moved.
I'll second it.
You made it seconded to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.